Of Hagler Mill Road and forty-three North. This is not in city limits. Here's our vicinity map. As we zoom in, you'll see that aerial. It is currently four lots being subdivided into one. There's the plat without contours. And here's the proposed layout of the boat storage buildings. Their variance requests include setbacks. They are required thirty-foot front, thirty-five-foot and eighteen-foot sides. And you can see they're requesting ten front, ten rear and five sides. They have already had this approved by the county as well. Their other requests include half-street improvements along Hagler Mill, sidewalks along Hagler Mill, and cap sewer. Aldot has already provided a written statement that they won't be requiring sidewalks along forty-three.
Engineering on.
We have no objections to those requests.
Did you say the county? It hasn't been run by the county and then they approved it? Okay.
Tom Samms, Longleaf Engineering, four-three-two, Sixty-Fifth Street, Tuscaloosa. Yes, sir. The aerial that you saw was a little outdated. The north side of Hagler Mill Road already has a boat storage facility that we're proposing here. This would be the second phase of that. So it is just sort of a continuation across the street.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission, any comments from the commissioner, questions of staff by the commission? Okay, commission before us, we have S thirty-one twenty-three Binyan Creek Boat Storage Phase Two, multiple variance requests, engineering has no issues with, and county has approved those variance requests. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Our other item of unfinished business from last month is for S thirty-two twenty-three Crabtree Subdivision. This is a resurvey of part of Lot Three Patriot Estates consisting of two lots on approximately three-point-one-six acres. This is located at eighty-two seventeen Old Marion Road and is not in city limits. Here's our vicinity map. You can see a couple of markers there. Patriot Parkway, sixty-nine South Bear Creek Road. Here is an aerial image. I'll direct you to these couple of lot lines here. We'll be removing those two and then creating a shape like that. Gets a little fuzzy to see here. So here you can see it with those two lot lines to be removed and the one new proposed line resulting in two lots. Their variance requests include right-of-way dedication on Old Marion, sidewalks on Old Marion, and cap sewer.
Engineering.
No objections to those requests.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Hernan, twenty-seven twenty-eight Lurleen Wallace Boulevard in Northport. This is property that you've probably seen four times over the past year at the intersection of Patriot and Old Marion. This will be my last time to present anything on this. We're just trying to square up some property lines with some neighbors to the north, and that's it.
Any questions for petitioner?
You promise this is your last time?
It's be my last time. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Thank you.
Thank you.
Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S thirty-two twenty-three Crabtree Subdivision with three variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Howard.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right. Moving into item seven on your agendas, we'll go into our preliminary plots for this month. Our first case is S thirty-three twenty-two Delray Farm of West Tuscaloosa. This is a resurvey of Lot Nine of Block Five Twenty-One TCIL Co-Subdivision and others. Consisting of one commercial lot on approximately point-five-three acres, this is located at twenty-one oh-five Twenty-Sixth Avenue in Council District Two. Here's our aerial overview there. You can see the Amtrak right along the side of three fifty-nine. You can see the two interior lot lines to be removed there, resulting in one lot, about half an acre. And their only variance requests are sidewalks along Twenty-Sixth Avenue and Twenty-first Street.
Engineering.
We're in agreement with that request.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm Robert Martin with Duncan Coker Associates. As Caitlin said, this is just removing interior lot lines to create one single lot. I would like to add a little context to this project. This is for a greenhouse which will produce lettuce to be sold to local restaurants, but most importantly, it will be operated and staffed by United Servile Policy. So this will give opportunities for disabled people to have jobs and improve their skillset for the community. The Bray Brothers have generously offered this piece of property for this project to be possible. So we're very excited about this and think it's going to be a benefit to the community. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any of the, we have some drawings in there. Why don't you just show those for the public? I think that's worth seeing.
And this is in my district. I think it's worth seeing also. I've heard a lot about the project but haven't had a chance to talk to the petitioner, so I'm very excited about it too.
While they're pulling up.
It's moving a little slow, but.
How large is the greenhouse going to be?
I think it's six thousand square feet. It's a pretty good-sized greenhouse, so if you're planning on.
And how many employees do you think?
So I think the plan is to have, and don't quote me on this, three to five disabled employees, and then they'll also have some that are not disabled.
Okay.
We saw this in Chair Vice Chair, Robert's, pretty cool project, pretty good thing for the area, and we're, I mean, it's, you need to get more publicity out there about this when you get started. It's a neat concept.
Is it going to be all like hydroponic?
That's right.
Can you have a storefront? We can buy direct.
Let's see what we can do.
That's all we had, right?
So this is just our preliminary drawing. Of course, we'll get more detailed as we get into design, but this is just a general concept.
Okay, thank you. Well, I mean, as you can tell, I think there's a lot of enthusiasm for the project, and I think the councilwoman is obviously excited for it as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this request?
I'm Michael Bray.
If you'll come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Bray, twenty-six hundred Muir Woods Drive, Owens Crossroads, Alabama. I, myself and my brother Robert are the developers on this, and we appreciate you approving this for us.
Right.
I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Love to meet with you, Ms. Howard.
I think we appreciate what you're doing here, so thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak for or against? All right. Commission, before us, we have S thirty-three twenty-three Delray Farm of West Tuscaloosa. One variance request, sidewalks along Twenty-Sixth and Twenty-first Avenue and Twenty-first Street, engineering has no issues with. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
I'll go to Ms. Howard.
Yes.
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 Our next case is S thirty-five twenty-three. This is a resurvey of Lot Two Boyd Estate. This is consisting of two residential lots on approximately one-point-one-two acres located at twenty-fifty-one Hargrove Road East in Council District Six. Here you can see that vicinity map just north of Bowers Park along Hargrove. And the aerial. Here's the plat with contours, without is a little clearer. You can see we are creating a new lot line resulting in those two lots. And these are for residential, Zoned R-one. Their only variance requests include lot configuration.
Engineering.
Planning's okay with that request?
Thank you.
Jamie Autry, fourteen-seventy North Bank Parkway, Tuscaloosa. Basically, as staff said, we're just going to take one uniquely shaped residential lot and turn it into two uniquely shaped residential lots. That's it.
Pretty clear, R-one, so we're good there. So anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S thirty-five twenty-three, resurvey of Lot Two Boyd Estates, one variance request, lot configuration, planning has no issues with, or engineering. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Next case is S thirty-seven twenty-three. This is a resurvey of lots twelve and thirteen of the resurvey of lots thirty through thirty-two A.P. Lee Subdivision. This is consisting of three residential lots on approximately point-six-nine acres located at twenty-fifty-seven and twenty-five oh-nine Harrison Street in Council District Two. Here you can see our vicinity map. This is near Prince Avenue, Prince Circle, just south of Hargrove Road East. Here's our current aerial layout, our plat with contours and without. You can see there are a couple of lot lines to be removed, one specifically going through the residence at Lot One here. And then there are two new lot lines to be created in the middle there, going from two lots to three. Their variance requests include right-of-way dedication and the typical street cross-section requirement.
Engineering.
No objections.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Hernan again. She pretty much explained everything. We've got an older subdivision, going to take two lots and make three residential lots out of it.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request?
Thank you.
Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S thirty-seven twenty-three, resurvey of lots twelve and thirteen, the resurvey of lots thirty, thirty-two, A.P. Lee Subdivision, two variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Come back to Ms. Howard.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
We will move along to S thirty-eight twenty-three. This is the first one on the back of your agenda. This is Hickory Ridge Phase Two, consisting of two lots on approximately thirteen-point-oh-six acres located at one-one-six-two-three Lake Nickel Road. This is not in city limits. Here we have our vicinity map. You can see east of the lake, down Lake Nickel Road. Our current aerial of the property, the plat with contours. You'll see we're separating out Lot Two and Lot One with the residence on it. Their variance requests include right-of-way dedication, sidewalks on Lake Nickel Road, cap sewer, and a drainage study.
Engineering.
So, engineering is in favor of the waiver for sidewalks, cap sewer, and drainage study, but because of the length of the frontage on this property, we think this is an appropriate time to acquire the amount of right-of-way based on the street classification. So we would like to recommend that you deny the request for the right-of-way variance, right-of-way dedication variance.
Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Hernan again. Good with everything. Just my developer, my property owner, just wanted to say, you know, please, please, please let him get the right-of-way variance, but if we can't, that's okay. Almost forty years ago, he dedicated fifteen additional feet on the opposite side of the road. And since nothing has ever been done on that road, he's just saying, well, why do we need more right-of-way if nothing's going on? But I said it.
You said it, but you know how we feel when engineering strongly requests.
I'm just relaying some conversation.
Are you prepared to take the vote with the right-of-way dedication in there as a variance request and potentially being denied because of that?
No, if you need, we'll go with what you got. Go with, we're okay with the right-of-way.
I think with what's going on up there, the right-of-way potentially is needed for potential future development and could potentially help this property. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just relaying a message.
Okay. Any other questions for petitioner? Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? All right, having heard none. We'll close discussion to the public. Obviously, we have a petition request that wants to stick with the right-of-way variance request, dedication request.
If it's going to be, no, sir.
Say again.
We can go, just do away with the request.
We've removed the right-of-way dedication request, so we only have three variance requests, sidewalks, cap sewer, and drainage study. Petitioner's requesting that. Engineering, you good with that?
Yes, sir, we are.
Any clarification, questions of commission to the staff or the petitioner? Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S thirty-eight twenty-three Hickory Ridge Phase Two. Original request had four variance requests, right-of-way dedication, sidewalks, cap sewer, drainage study. Per request of the petitioner, the right-of-way dedication is no longer a variance request. So we have this petition with three variance of sidewalks, cap sewer, and drainage study only. Have a motion and a second with that being the request.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Our next case is S forty twenty-three. This is a resurvey of Lot Six Summer Ridge, which is a resurvey, excuse me, resurvey of Lot Six Summer Ridge, a resurvey of Lot Six Summer Ridge Subdivision. This is amending the setbacks for one lot on approximately one acre located at ten-two-oh-six Sexton Bed Road. This is not in city limits. You can see our vicinity map there. This is on the lake. This is our subject property. And here is our plat with contours and without. The basis of this subdivision is to amend the existing setbacks. Currently, it's thirty feet. They're requesting twenty-five feet. And they also have the variance request for cap sewer. This was already granted by the county as well.
Already what?
Already granted by the county as well.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
No, no. No, we were waiting. Sorry. Engineering on the variance request?
We have no objections.
Which the county has already approved. Petitioner. Get your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. Jason Walker, twenty-eight ninety Rightsmine Road, Northeast Tuscaloosa, representing the Dill family and requesting this five-foot additional building frontage, basically, based on terrain, and as was noted, the county commission did approve it previously.
Can you go back out?
This is basically a cross from Carol's Creek.
Okay, so that's, what's the name of that island? Is it Sexton Bed Road?
This is Sexton Bed Road, yeah, so. And this particular lot has about seven-hundred foot of frontage, so it's got a lot of buffer to the lots on either side of it, but it's just, it's steep off the back, you know, near vertical, probably one-to-one slope off the back, so this is just to buy a little bit of room to get a, you know, probably a second home type situation.
So this is just to make it buildable, more buildable?
Yeah.
It's actually really steep on that water side.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Having heard none, thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Bring back up the variance request, thank you. All right, commission, before us, we have S forty twenty-three, resurvey of Lot Six Summer Ridge, two variance requests, front setback, cap sewer, engineering has no issues with, and the county has already approved. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Howard.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
We will move to S forty-one twenty-three Hilltop Estates Number Four, being a resurvey of lots sixty-one through sixty-six and seventy-nine through ninety-two of Hilltop Estates Two. This is consisting of seventeen residential lots and one open space lot on approximately forty-six acres located in the existing Hilltop Estates subdivision. This is not in city limits. You can see on our vicinity map, we are pretty far north near the lake. Here is our current aerial image. And here is our plat with contours and without. You can see several remnant lot lines. I'll back up for you. This is the best picture of how it exists currently. The applicant will likely describe to you the way that the lake has expanded beyond the bounds that they had originally outlined, and the lot lines for the residential lots need to be amended according to where the lake is now. So just highlighting those for you. You see some of those remnant lot lines here, here.
So you're just, you're adding more lot lines? They're adding more lots? Maybe making the lots smaller or something?
They're moving some over to the western side of the lake and then amending the ones primarily on the eastern side of the lake. So the western side is slightly more dense than it was, eastern side is slightly less dense than it was. They also have right-of-way to be vacated that is currently, you can see that here, twenty feet wide of paving width. Going down to the bottom corner, they're also providing fire apparatus turnaround. And their variance requests include public street frontage for all of these lots outside of the two, ten and eleven here, which touch Hilltop Loop. All the other ones are accessed off of a private easement. So lots twelve through seventeen do not have public street frontage. They're also requesting a variance for lot configuration.
This, I think, is a little bit of a unique situation or case. Normally, we want to avoid lots not having public street frontage. Considering the location of this, the fact that it's a resurvey and basically doing a lot reduction from what's actually there today, I also understand that this has also received a blessing from the county commission. Seeing that it's unique, I'm okay with the public street frontage request.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, I'm Michael McGuire, twenty-three fifteen Fourteenth Street, Tuscaloosa. It's basically, I think they've covered everything. The only concerns really when we went to the county commission was the private road. It's actually an existing unnamed public right-of-way. It's not being maintained by the county now, so I think this is going to actually help them out, so they were, kind of seemed like they were behind us doing this. They did request that we form HOA, which we planned to do anyway, and our documents is going to basically state that lots twelve through seventeen are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that private road. We'll have it on the recorded plat and we'll also have it as each deed is recorded. I believe that, out of all the things we've been through, that's been the only issue that has come up that we've worked out.
Private road going to be gated?
Yes. The county allows three, and we have five, so that's why.
It looks like a good drawing, a good development. So I guess, when you have a private road like that and you have HOA, how do we tackle as far as funding? If someone does buy it, it looks like it'd be a great place to live, honestly.
They're beautiful lots.
So, but it won't come back on us, the county, under the circumstances? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. What Michael has said, I think, is pretty paramount, that there's a notation on the plat that's recorded, and then each deed, when ownership transfers from the developer to the new homeowner, it should be noted on that deed as well.
One of the biggest concerns that they had with the extended road in Cul-de-sac was fire department, fire marshal sat in with us and gave us his blessings with regards to access, how they tried to get access to the gate with not blocks access, as well as, I think there was some potential concern about the Cul-de-sac turnaround, but all that can be worked out in the LDP.
We've already changed it for him. I've talked with Patrick about that.
He kind of blessed it. County's approved it.
Go with Kirk, like Kirk and Roger gone, HOA, you know, when someone road calls disrepair, he just.
It's up to lots twelve through seventeen to pay for it and repair it. I mean, it's actually an existing gravel road there. This was originally platted in nineteen sixty-nine, I think.
Is the county currently maintaining it?
They're not maintaining it. It's just a gravel road that's there. It actually looks like it's a pretty decent little road, but we're going to improve it.
I've lived long enough to see people not pay their HOA there.
Yeah, that's in every neighborhood.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay, having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S forty-one twenty-three Hilltop Estates Number Four with two variance requests, public street frontage and lot configuration, engineering has no issues with, as the county has approved as well. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Next case is S forty-two twenty-three Jaybird Road Subdivision. This is consisting of two lots on approximately point-nine-four acres located at fifty-eight-twenty Jaybird Road. This is not in city limits. Here's our vicinity map. You can see Buttermilk Road to the east, Skyline Boulevard to the west. The current subject property, currently one lot, the proposed plat with contours and without, creating those two lots. Their variance requests include lot configuration and cap sewer.
No objections to those requests. No objections to those requests.
Before we get too deep into that, this is tied to a piece of property to the north, correct?
It is, it's not. It might be in same ownership, but they are currently two different lots.
Okay. Let's hear from the petitioner.
Chairman and administration members, I'm Alan McGifford, McGifford Associates, twenty-eight fourteen Stillman Boulevard, representing the Todd Masterson family here. This is a family piece of property. Family was approached by the adjoining landowner to the north about acquiring this piece, and the family wants to sell it. And it will become part of a larger piece of property that this board will see soon in a fairly significant development that I think will be very acceptable to the city.
Any questions for petitioner? Alan, this piece of property is not going to be used as access to Jaybird, is it?
Sir?
Well, this piece of property will not be used as access to Jaybird, will it?
No.
Okay.
They, because of lot configuration, they make us make it contiguous to Jaybird Road. Little gravel road to your right is not a public road.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Having heard none. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have S forty-two twenty-three Jaybird Road Subdivision with two variance requests, lot configuration, cap sewer. lot configuration, cap sewer, engineering has no issues with. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Howard.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Our last subdivision this evening is S-4323 Little Sandy Properties. This is consisting of two lots on approximately 3.15 acres located at 10814 and 10818 Little Sandy Road, not in city limits. Here's our vicinity map. We are down 69 South off Little Sandy Road. The current property, the plat with contours and without. I'll highlight the lot lines to be removed for you, make them a little clearer to see. So going to just lots one and two here. You can see the two existing homes with the field lines. Their variance requests include cap sewer and half-street improvements.
Engineering.
No objections.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Chris Centel, Centel Engineering. This is a land swap between the same guy. So he just acquired Lot 1, and we're just shifting the lot over to the west to make Lot 2 a little bit larger.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for this petition? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. We have mission S-4323 Little Sandy Properties, two variance requests, cap sewer, half-street improvements, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
We have one item for other business. It is an annexation, case is AN0823, annexing approximately .62 acres located at 11955 Grand View Drive. Here's our vicinity map. This is a property on the lake, single-family home, and the petition is to annex for city schools. In framework, this is outlined as a future service area. It is not a priority infill, but again, they're requesting for schools. We analyzed framework, and we also reached out to the various departments. The only people with any comments were EST, who say that they will not be providing services in this area.
Mark Simpson, 11955 Grand View Drive. So my wife and I are petitioning to be in the city limits for school system, access to the school system.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. All right, commission, before us, we have an annexation request, that's ANX, AN0823, annexing 11955 Grand View Drive in the city of Tuscaloosa. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Welcome to the city.
I didn't mean to mislead you. We, do you have one other item on, on other business?
We got to make it last until six o'clock, so we can pick up our plate jet.
We, we are going to be amending the framework timeline. You guys should have a printout in front of you. The amendment is to remove the July 10th meeting.
Yeah, and just to go a little bit further in that, it extends our time, you know, it shows the additional meetings that we'll have in order to kind of wrap up the code update process.
So is this a list we, you'll need to.
So this is, again, voting on your future.
So the only real important change here is the July 10th being canceled, right?
July 10th is canceled. That's not the only amendment. It's, it's really.
All the other stuff.
Mister, right, Mister Harrison, we, we met and talked kind of more further in on it. So that's why it probably looks pretty familiar to you.
This is all conformative, right? Vote on this thing or anything? Don't need to vote on this, do we?
Or does it take six to pass?
Oh, it's a Jimbo question. Five, let's have some fun with it.
That's it.
All right, commission, before us, we got a vote to adopt the new amendments to the timeline for the framework code update process. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes opposed? The ayes have it. No discussion? For that, we are adjourned.
Now, that is amazing.
That's exactly.